And these kids in this program, I mean, we only just grab, you know, basketballs and soccer balls and pretty much some of them believe they got down and just be kids that don't like to carry all this extra baggage on them and some of the things that we pretty much demand or, you know, we come up with together is, you know, respect on each other, on each other. You know, appreciate the program, make it better because this is all we have, so we gotta make the best of it. So, um, you know, we do about a little bit. So whatever else that, you know, we can add to that, we'll be able to do more with it. Um, I know there's different agendas that people have on the table or some of them, you know, that is more important to them. I think, you know, just whatever we have, thank you. But, um, I think we, you know, if we could get more, that'd be just even better. That's it. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Alguinos. Tonight, uh, speaking of the overall organization, central policy of the organization. Do you have, uh, I, you know, this is a, this has been a long-term thing for me. I think, uh, someone can know that was under the UC's task force, uh, go out back. During the time under UC's task force, when Mason Mack, we got to the point where, um, we actually had a process that, uh, before we were able to grab properties, okay, rather than going through tax sales, in terms of equipment and control of the city, that, uh, from my perspective, what I'm looking at is the redevelopment authority is basically, uh, the second half of that, and that's how we dispense that, okay? And one of the things that we, you know, we talked about under UC's task force, uh, I can still talk about here, but the idea is to get that, uh, to dispense that, to find some way of getting other awkward-like properties into the city. And redevelopment authority is one way we can do that, and that is the whole initiative. And it is one of the most, um, the, uh, I guess, so, I, I support this budget, but I can understand the concern of putting the cotton before the horse, if you will, okay? Right? Uh, and so, I think, uh, we could talk, that's important, we want to help as any place, as you said, and, and work out, uh, the details of the thing. There has to be some oversight and accountability of this organization, from, from council, especially. But I do support the budget, and I want to make that clear exactly, just to go through, um, control and how we handle, how, especially housing.
Thank you.
Andrew Mello. Good evening. I'm the newest member to the redevelopment agency and, uh, pleasure to meet you all this evening. Thank you for the time. Uh, first, I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues regarding the budget. We have discussed the budget at length, at least at three meetings that I've been present on, and feel very comfortable with the numbers that we've gone through on those terms. The fundamental issue that you mentioned, Councilwoman Seago, is about the checks and balances. I echo your concern with that and feel that there is a process that we may be able to do internally in order to provide that same checks and balances, along with providing you with a monthly or quarterly review of how those funds are being allocated. Um, the critical point, though, where I think there is some divergence between council, the agency, and even within the members of the agency themselves, is the underlying foundation of what we are supposed to do, what we are legally bound to do, what we are chartered to do, and what we actually do. Um, and that, I think, is one of the problems, not just with our organization, but with the other agencies in general. Um, and I would say that if we were to go back and really fix the whole thing, as Councilwoman Seago suggests, I would start literally at the grassroots and do it for all the agencies. Allow each of the agencies to come up with an up-to-date, modern plan of action that clearly defines and articulates what our mission is, where the proceeds of those efforts will come from, and how the proceeds will be allocated. Um, I've seen that work in other cities. Um, I just recently moved from Detroit, just for your perspective, so I understand what it's like for a large city to struggle with significant economic challenges. Um, but one way they did it is starting down with very finite, specific goals, not trying to boil the ocean, but achieving one goal after another. Um, and so, in terms of the objectives that were outlined in the, um, budget themselves, we did sit down and try to think about how we can create a set of checks and balances internally to create, for example, additional proposals for people who would be asked to provide us with surveying services, for example. Rather than going to traditional focuses, providing the city with services in the past, look for a new breed of groups that would provide that assistance. Um, possibly even stimulate companies within the Central Falls region to create a startup in order to provide those services. I think that some small businesses, knowing that they have a partner in the city, um, would go a long way in expanding those operations, and I think would add some greater credibility to what we are doing overall as a community. Um, and so, you know, with regard to the budget, there's just so much we can do in the short period of time, um, but, uh, with some caveats, I think that the budget in its current situation should be approved.
Thank you. Okay, what else?
Ms. Vittina Ramos. I'm Vittina Ramos, I'm from Shakali, Alhita. I really support the project of the mayor, and I think it's good that they've got a straight poster. As well, I think it's good because they already started with sidewalks and they're saying they're gonna fix all the sides for those floors or the gravel, so it's gonna be nice. So, mine is gonna be nice. You see today, okay? I'll wait if you're doing, if you can come and see now, we can talk to you. Okay?
Thank you.
Yes, ready for the keynote?
And every year, the, every year for the last four years, we've had over a million dollar surplus. So I was just, that's sort of where I was going. Is there, right, so it's, so we don't know?
The past two years have been unanticipated revenues. Expenses have been flat or right on budget, I should say. This year is no exception. We're about one to two percent under in expenses, which is very tight. Revenue, we've been blessed, the city's been blessed with a turnaround with the residents and the businesses in the city. And we continue to have people paying their own taxes that are, that are, if people fell behind for a few years. The past two years, they've been paying their old bills, which is a great sign. And that's been much, much higher than we anticipated. The collection rate this year seems to be much closer to what we've got to do at ninety-two percent. That's where it looks like we're going to finish instead of ninety-four. So that's going to be much flatter. That's why this one's at ninety-two percent again. So, I went into this year saying, I don't think we're not going to get a billion dollars. Again, this was sixty, but again, I'm absolutely surprised at the back tax payment piece of the revenue. If you saw that in the latest monthly, and you might see it in this next one, it just started to show up.
I saw it, yeah.
We got six hundred and change in the only budget of fifty.
Do you, um, do you think that collections does anything to, like, is that playing for Anna, for the back taxes?
I think we've been doing a better job with, working with the state to deal with how to recover old taxes in terms of income tax returns and stuff. We've been doing a much better job of that.
Thank you.
So I, I, I over, I mean, as Matt said, I have an obligation, one way or the other. Six hundred grand is going to be paid by June thirtieth, twenty-seventeenth. If I'm going to use most of the money from this year, I believe it's going to do that. But I'm not going to look at it and say that there's a built-in surplus of any of the two revenues that are in it. The two comments of reserves in that shit.
So a contingency reserve? So then that's a total?
One and one and a half percent. It's a very minimal, it's very common. I've seen it at five, I've seen it at five percent, I'm like,
Yeah, it's pretty small.
I've done this for twenty-five years, I've seen five percent inside a year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For the discussion, a vote call, vote.
Councilman Serre?
Yes. President and yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reckert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saino Seidel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Volger? President of motion, Perry.
Thank you.
Item number five is ordinance pertaining to salaries from department heads and others in classified service. This is first reading and consideration.
Looking for a motion, please. Take it for the next discussion.
I vote to approve the ordinance pertaining to salaries from department heads and others in classified service.
What do my council, I'm seeing a second by councilwoman Gudalas to approve? Discussion.
Anyone on your discussion? One question. Clarification on the admin, EMA assistant, is that fire? Do we know? Because I just, I can't remember what is, okay, so it's in the fire, it's in fire, right? EMA, makes sense, but I just want to make sure.
Anyone else? For the discussion, vote call, vote.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reckert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saino Seidel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Volger? President of motion, Perry.
Thank you.
Item six, is the ordinance demanding the wage schedule generally first reading and consideration?
Looking for a motion?
I vote to approve the ordinance demanding the wage schedule generally.
A motion by Councilwoman Fonseca, a second by Councilwoman Volger to approve the ordinance demanding the wage schedule generally. Under discussion. You're here yet. Under discussion. Discussion. Looking for a vote call, vote.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reckert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saino Seidel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Volger? Motion, Perry.
Thank you. Next slide.
Item seven is the annual capital program and capital budget ordinance. First reading and consideration.
Looking for a motion?
I vote to approve the annual capital program and capital budget ordinance.
Motion by Councilwoman Fonseca, a second by Councilwoman Figueroa to approve. Discussion after the motion.
Councilwoman President, so, I know, I know we talked a lot last Wednesday about the different items and I had a question I had asked. For public works for the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, do we have a breakdown of what that three seventy-five is going to be spent on?
Give us just a minute. All right. All right, so breakdown would be a new sweeper at EPW, some money allocated for street trees, and two hundred for sidewalks. Sidewalk weekend.
Just saying, you mean two hundred thousand, not two hundred. I just want, I just want, did you say pesos? Can we remind that? So, the street trees, can you talk a little bit, we did ask the, or I asked the question at the last meeting, if we could find out what kind of trees tonight, we didn't, I don't think,
I can, yeah, at some point I could,
And that's fine.
Ask our office, Matt Largess, and he would, would know.
Do you know how much, how much of that three seventy-five is allocated for street trees?
Fifteen thousand.
Rough idea how many trees that is?
Fifteen thousand.
They're like, they're like a foot high?
Thousand a tree, approximately maybe forty-five.
Okay, so, so the new sweeper, street, it's really hard to say street trees. Street trees, no, street sweeper's good, that's easy. Street trees. And then two hundred thousand on sidewalks?
Yes.
Is there something that we, is there something in particular that we're spending, or just sidewalks in general?
Sidewalks in general. There's various sidewalks that haven't been repaired in many, many years. I have to explain that to you, but it's just in general.
Just in general. And then, would you like clarifying the fire? The one hundred fifty-two and the capital as well?
Two pieces. One is for our ladder payment. And the rest would be for fire equipment.
I remember that. Right, so the, the personal, right?
Yes.
I remember that. So there's no, um, there's, we're not buying another piece of equipment outside of that for a fire?
As of now, no, that's not.
And then the last, my last question is the nuisance for the hundred thousand?
I don't have that here.
Well, maybe perhaps that's six thousand.
Maybe.
Do you know the hundred thousand? Welcome.
Hi, Councilman. The last year's one hundred thousand dollars was used for, personally, process of being used for the demolition of sixty-three Fletcher Street. This one hundred thousand dollars, there's nothing currently allocated for it. It's, it's, the request was made to have a fund for whether it be a fire on Pine Street or a situation in Fletcher Street, to have monies available to the community. There's nothing currently assigned for it.
So, for things like sixty-three Fletcher, are we going to, is it going to be treated somewhat like a revolving fund? Will we get that, will we recoup that money when that land is developed, or get paid back to the city for demo?
Yes, exactly.
So, there'll be a hundred, and then most likely we'll have another hundred, thereabouts. Will we ever take up for demo, because demo won't be, demo won't be a complete hundred thousand for Fletcher, will it?
I believe the low speed came in at ninety-eight, partly because of the difficulty in the crane, because of the house being so close together.
Okay, so it is actually that expensive because of its, because of its placement?
So the, the fund will start off small, but the idea will grow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Congress, big flag here. Check. So, so obviously there's sort of about, about the amount, but my question to you is really about how,
Which I am.
The allocation of the five sixty-four.
To the redevelopment.
To the redevelopment, yeah, sorry. I wouldn't put it next to this. So that money is there for FY seventeen, and after that year goes by, how are we measuring success of the money we've, yeah, please, or whoever.
The redevelopment agency.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
Does that have any question to us?
I'm sorry, I should have invited you as well. So I think, I think it'd be really great for us as the council and also members of the audience to just hear a little bit about how, how we envision measuring success from the money that we're investing. So if we look at the money as something we're seeking to return on our investment, like, what do we envision a year from now? Especially given that we're not planning to allocate any money afterward. After that year, what is, what is it that we're going to point to and say, you know what, like, this is a great investment?
So our, our principal focus is the four properties that were conveyed to the, um, all that, I'm speaking, you know, before Matt's, but I, I sometimes am more involved with this. Yes, so the four properties that were conveyed, two are clear and flat land and make good development opportunities, so there is expedited development of those. There certainly existing potential developers in the community that are interested in those properties. One Way Blackstone and Forty-two Park Street will require more average loans there within. And then, the other two, the other principal focus is the soccer field at the Gino Park Street. And so, so, you know, a year from now, ideally, that's the soccer field, and then the four properties are, I think there's not a lot of potential beyond residential. So I think the agency did look at pretty extensively, and those are, they're small sites, they're residential areas, so they're used to, but are going to use this around in their goods. And then there were, um, properties taken off this year's tax bill by the redevelopment agency. Eight of those properties are available for immediate foreclosure by the city.
How many total?
Uh, there are twenty-one, twelve, so there's thirteen. They'll be eligible for redemption on March twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. And of course, now the permission of those properties and pay the back taxes, if afforded, please transfer money to the company. But those, and with those properties, the sun is faced by experiences in the agency, so they're very, very, very difficult to figure out what the best solution would be. Will be permanent with the city, greatly greatest opportunity. That is particularly a focus of the agency, even for the chair, but is economic development and increasing the tax rates.
That's just a follow-up question to that. So when you say are we conveying, does that mean they've been purchased at the city already? Like, that, that we have, that they have clear title and we can do what we want with them now?
The four.
Yes, the four. Okay, so then, the five hundred and sixty-four and the one hundred and, I think it's three, that sits in that fund? Right, so what, okay, what exactly, or, I, I remember, because I remember on the city planner reminding me that we were talking about project man, actually property management, and we're property manager. So that spun us into that whole conversation about quasi-public, right, so here's my question. Is that going to be a revolving fund, the five hundred, well, six hundred and seventy, whatever it is, close to seventy thousand, is that going to be revolving? Right, is that going to be revolving? Or is it?
Well, the four properties, we are hoping to recoup some of the monies that we're spending. What we're trying to do is how houses that people can afford, and put that on the property. We're trying to get new developers to set homes, either duplexes or triplexes on the property, so we can have affordable houses in the area. The money that we're recouping and would be the surveying of property, redevelopment of property, and property management. When the property is sold, we're trying to recoup every portion of that from the developer, so it can be a revolving fund. So the monies that we recoup from the sale, we will use that to purchase other properties as well.
Okay, so that seems like a small amount, or a small percentage of the money. So can you give me just an example of what one might look like using, you know, a hundred thou, is it a hundred thousand dollars per property, do you envision? What, what exactly, what exactly are you looking at? Are we going to build something, salad?
It depends heavily on the property, but the redevelopment agency is not allowed, or general laws, as I understand it. They do the development themselves, so they prepare the land for development.
Okay.
So the idea is that it's like flat.
So ready, it's ready to go. Right, so, so then from there, you will reach out to our first? And then those, sorry, no, no.
So another key point is that the twenty-one properties that were taken off the tax bill owe taxes to the city. So the idea is that when this property is conveyed to the developer,
To come back onto the tax roll.
Not only that, but some of those back taxes could be.
Okay, so even then, so there's some of that recouping.
Right.
It's not necessarily going back into the redevelopment agency, right? Because those taxes would go back to the city at that point. So really diverted back to the city. But do you, okay, so what do you envision to make a, make a lot of buildings? What do you, I know, I know some lots, like Blackstone is like, you have to be a mountain go to get up there, right? So I don't know Bad Sledding, I don't know, I don't really know, it seems like a difficult lot to build on, but you know, something like that, I would think would be expensive, right? Oh, so you're not going to do that one? So one that you,
No, 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 she's, One Way Blackstone, it's a lot of repair, so that's, that's so good, but they just, the agency is focusing on the, the first two that are clear.
Okay.
And then One Way Blackstone is more significant investment, but I think this, this is what the agency that's, you know, in its current,
Figure investment.
But in its current state, it's not greatly contributing to the state.
Right, so, so something that's already cleared, what, 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 what are you thinking about for an investment for that type of piece of property? Twenty thousand, fifty thousand, hundred thousand?
I think twenty thousand.
Okay, so just to give me an idea for what we're going to get for over half a million dollars, you know, roughly, and how many, how many could be? Okay. Excellent, thank you. I appreciate you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else? Vote call, vote.
Councilman Perry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reckert?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saino Seidel?
No.
Councilwoman Volger?
Yes.
President of motion, Perry.
Takes us to adjourn, and a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn?
We're here, Councilwoman Gonzalez, we stand adjourned at seven fifty-two. Thank you everyone for coming.
I think we're good.
I have been talking, and we really want to be able to provide opportunities, not only after school, but also in the summer. So this will be a great start for this work party. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Britt, may I have your remark? Good evening, I'm Mariana Rivera, and I am here regarding the mayor's proposal for after-school programs and youth internship or youth fellowship opportunities recently, I'm sure you're all aware. Or some of you may have not been aware of the recent encounters with some of our youth and the police department. I have reached out to some of the parents, and I've met with the parents, I've also met with the kids, and we need to keep them busy. We need opportunities for them. One of the biggest concerns that they're stating that is that we do not have enough opportunities for them. So I think you should consider some mayor's proposal regarding this, and we need to offer them the opportunities that we need. And then the youth fellowships, having interns for our kids in the city as well, giving them job ready. They go off to college with their own done in school and hopefully come back to our city and invest in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Lee?
Good evening, everybody. I'm here because I want to present a concern of my family. I was looking into the budget proposal, and we, we own two properties in the city. The taxes are very high. They have been going up every year. And although we've tried to raise rents, do different things, it's been a little difficult to afford the properties. So I want you to consider that, and I know that it says that we're lowering taxes, but mine is going up this year as well. So, I just want to present that quickly. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming.
Ms. Pat Peterson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, members of the city council, for allowing us to speak today. As chairperson of the redevelopment agency, we are here in favor of our budget, of course. The redevelopment agency members are very fortunate to have been nominated by the mayor and confirmed by you. We appreciate the effort that you have put towards helping us get the city on its feet. We are pledged to do the right thing, and we are going to be looking at houses that people can afford, not just affordable houses. We are bound by the Rhode Island General Director, let, Rhode Island General Director forty-five thirty-two dash five regarding the redevelopment process, and we want to adhere to all the rules and regulations of the state and city council and central balls. As members of the agency are here tonight in support of the budget, we have two members here this evening to answer any questions you may have. We understand that there were a couple of things that you had questions on regarding the ordinance. We will take that up on our June thirteenth meeting, and we are listening to you and we hear your concerns. And we have spoken to council, and we are going to be moving the questionable wording that we had about. Are there any questions?
Are you referring to section five, eminent domain check?
Yes, it's forty dash four and forty dash five, two references on two dash thirty.
Which would also include private property.
Would you like, I do, yes, would you please? The first one is the agency is hereby exempt from the requirements of section two dash thirty of the central ball's code of ordinances. That's the first one. The second is, the agency shall have the power to acquire by the exercise of eminent domain any real property or any estate or interest in real property within a redevelopment area whenever it is decided by a majority vote of the agency that the acquisition of real property or an estate or interest in real property is in the public interest and necessary for the public use. We will remove those two sections. We will confirm it on our June thirteenth meeting.
Super, thank you.
I'd like to make one comment about that. Good evening. So, I did have a question about this at a meeting last week. And council president was nice enough to mention before this meeting that that conversation had. But I'd just like to say to you, I have concerns, because I feel ill-according to carp before the wars, since we are, we are going to approve funding a quasi-public entity, taking tax, local tax dollars and moving them out from under the purview of this council and, and the people we represent. So I, so that we're clear, I want to make sure you, you heard it from me personally, that that was my concern, and while this is, this is all well and good, it does not solve the issue because we are approving tonight something that is going to be changed in the future. I would prefer that we change it and then fund it. So that's just, I just think that's the proper process that, that I would like to see.
Well, we did try to address it early, at an earlier meeting. Unfortunately, council did not get back to us in a timely manner. Our budget is that we give it to the mayor, so we had to present it at that time. If you have concerns about any of the line items, we'd be more than happy to address those.
Thank you. I think those were the two major concerns. Like Councilwoman says, our concern is any organization applying for property within the city without the city council approval, we feel you need checks and dollars. And I'm sure your word is good, I'm not concerned with that, but I understand approving your budget before that's in there, I mean, there's ninety-nine percent chance of what you said is going to happen, that you're striking that section. I think the councilwoman just would like some relief that it's definitely going to happen. When is your next meeting, the thirtieth?
June thirteenth.
And that section still?
Yes.
The council meeting is in Derby?
No, Derby.
Our meeting is the third month.
I'm trying to think what I'm trying on this one, but we, we thought that.
We can get that strike too, before your meeting.
Before the final passage, and what we're looking at, before the final passage of this budget, I, I would really like that, sure.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the change in language. I'm still concerned about the amount of money, but there is no, and so how does that, how does that change the check? All that changes is eminent domain, how does that change? So how does it move back and come before?
The amount that we are looking for?
No, it doesn't, no, yeah, it doesn't, but it does not change the flow, the process, the process. Eminent domain may be stricken, but how is that going to change the check that exists in council?
Well, we are a public corporation, we are backed by the regulations. We do have a, We do have authority to acquire the property, but we understand your concerns, and we want to work with you, we're not trying to work against you, and we are here for the good of the city.
And again, my concern is over 600,000 of public local taxes being moved to a quasi, quasi-public entity that we would have no check against.
Yes, it's a half million, it's 564,000.
Well, when the city planner spoke last week, he said there was also 100,000 from last year, so that's over, okay, the 103 and the 564 is over 600,000, to carry over from F50.
Right. It's from previous years.
Right, so you're talking over 600,000, that was my point. I'm not saying that tonight's budget, or the budget that we're looking at has 600,000, has nearly 600, at 564,500.
Absolutely.
And, and at my point last week was that, and to the superintendent's point and to Mr. Rivera's point, we need other things in the city, and one of them is a community center for the youth, and half a million dollars, 600,000 is an awful lot of money.
But we also need housing, which is very important for, if you, if you have other concerns, we would be more than happy to address them, if you want to put them in writing, or send me an email, or pick up the phone and you give me a call, I'll be more than happy to speak with you.
Okay, so, no offense, but this is, this is the time that we need to address it? I'm just letting you know, I just want the, I just want this to be in the public, I appreciate, I appreciate that I've never, no one's ever reached out to me personally with your contact information, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about, but it is still how I see this issue.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that you're not, I don't think you personally are doing anything wrong, but I am concerned, and if I don't waste my.
Can I add something?
Sure.
I understand both of your concerns, but this is public comment, so we really need to hear the comments, and then when you have something on the board to discuss.
I am, but I was asking a question before she left the podium.
We can talk back to you.
Is there anyone else?
I'm not going to change it.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernan Coria?
And this is very proud, that, that, that you're here, you're in the city of central halls, and we see that they want to work in the city of better central halls, and part of the city is, that's a quite a big, and we, part of the project they have, to improve now. Okay, so, we're going to say thank you for that you have been working on, and I see they, all of the city doing good things, and for sure, they're working hard to see a better city, so we will follow this, so thank you.
Mr. Garland's office?
Alright, I'm here just to pretty much touch on the base of youth advocacy, or the youth program, excuse me if I sound a bit nervous, because I.
You're so, you're my friend.
Thank you, thank you. And before I go into that, I just want to say thank you to everyone that has tried to make the city better, and just make things how they should be. You know, as growing up as a youth, you know, I was, always felt like, always made it feel like if I was not supposed to do anything great, you know, or anything special, and which is a contradiction in my heart, because I was told I'd be doing all these things bad, which some of them were, but really, I felt like I was, you know, in my heart, I felt like I was special, and I felt like I was, you know, meant to do something great for my life, and one of the reasons it all started, that I actually stopped doing bad things was, we did have a community center back then, and I got kicked out a whole summer. And during that summer, I picked up pretty much everything that I shouldn't have, including drinking, smoking, hanging out with your own crowd, getting into fights, among other things that I cannot tell you about, but that's the reason I care about so much, about working with the kids in the community, is because I see myself in them, and, you know, it hurts for me, it hurts me to see them feel the way I used to feel, and I still feel that way, because I still carry that pain with me, and, but I try to put that to the side to, to share, you know, with them that I knew, that I felt I was right, as far as knowing that I was, you know, special, or I could give something great to this world, even though, you know, a lot of these kids feel that, you know, the same thing, that they proceed to not be great, or they're just like, you know, just kids from CF, and they're just fums, or, you know, they're supposed to be like trash, and I think it's huge that we do invest in the kids' programming, because it gives, you know, them assurance that, you know, they are cared about, and I'm not sure that what is too much more important than, you know, the kids at this point, knowing that people care about them, that they're something meaningful, and these programs are huge, we are like the only town that I know of that doesn't have a community center, or a facility where kids can just be kids, you know, we're actually, you know, we do a program at Veterans, we started off with 30 to 40 kids, and now we're up to about 90, now because, for any reason, just other than, you know, kids, friends will tell their friends, and they would come, so we started with 40th, 5th graders, now we do three different sections, we do 4th, 5th graders, we do 7th and 8th graders, and then we do some high.